There's no corrections, errors, or omissions. Motion, please.
Kukowski make a motion to approve the minutes of October 1st, 2019.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Upstains.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Item four is a resolution recognizing a retiring police detective. Would you please read that into the record, Catherine?
Certainly. Resolution number 12095-101519. Resolution of appreciation to Andre S. Antreson. Andre Assian. Better?
Very good.
Whereas Andre S. Antresian. We're gonna say Andre. Began his employment with the City of Oak Creek on November 28th, 1988 as a full-time police officer. And whereas during his 30 years and 11 months of service, Andre has been an integral part of the Police Department, serving as patrol officer early in his career, then rising to the rank of detective. And whereas Andre was a field training officer with only three years of experience training several members of the future leadership of the department. And whereas Andre continued to lead the way by being promoted to the rank of acting detective March 23rd, 1997, and detective on April 1st, 1998. And whereas Andre has been a valuable employee during his years of dedicated service with the Oak Creek Police Department, always striving to enhance the quality of life for the citizens of the city, and has been well-known for his work ethic and his dedication to the department. And whereas throughout his career, Andre has played a vital role in 12 homicide investigations in the City of Oak Creek. Whereas Andre received one lifesaving award, five meritorious arrest awards, six letters of commendation, five shift acknowledgements, one award of excellence, and one excellence in training award in recognition of his efforts and hard work as an officer and detective for the Oak Creek Police Department. And whereas Andre served on numerous specialty units throughout his career to include field training officer, emergency response unit, crisis negotiation unit, assistant team leader, chaplain committee, career survival unit, police officer support team, CPR instructor, background investigator, AFIS technician for fingerprint verification, motorcycle gang unit, computer voice stress analyzer operator, and member of the Milwaukee area investigative team for officer-involved shootings. And whereas Andre was one of the main people to help establish the chaplain program under the direction of Chief Thomas Bauer. And whereas Andre has established a level of excellence in the detective bureau since 1997 with his thorough investigations and excellent interviewing skills. Andre has assisted in developing seven other members of the department as detectives through his mentorship. Andre has also considered a valuable resource to all supervisors who have overseen the detective bureau. And whereas Andre is retiring from the Oak Creek Police Department after completing 30 years and 11 months of full-time service to the City of Oak Creek. Now therefore be it resolved by the Mayor and Common Council of the City of Oak Creek for and on behalf of the citizens of the City of Oak Creek, that sincere gratitude and appreciation be extended to Andre for his years of professional, dedicated, and faithful service to the City of Oak Creek and the Police Department, and that the best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Andre and his family for future years. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the meeting, and that the City Clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Andre, cast and adopted this 15th day of October, 2019.
Thank you, Catherine. Anybody have any words for Andre? Steve?
Thanks, Mayor. Back when I was a special agent with U.S. Customs, I had the ugly task of having to do a search warrant in the city for child pornography. And as the investigation evolved, it turned out to be an individual who was married and he had kids in the house, and it was a small house, and, you know, I didn't have a whole lot of experience dealing with those type of family matters. And I don't think I ever thanked Andre about this, but, you know, I reached out to the local department, which was Oak Creek, and Andre was the one who came to my assistance. And nothing like dumping a rather ugly case upon a detective and say, "Okay, I'm only gonna do this federal stuff, but I don't have any jurisdiction on all this other ugly stuff here, so here you go, Andre, it's all yours." And he just took it and he ran with it and came to a successful conclusion. And like I said, I don't think I ever thanked Andre, so, you know, I do appreciate what he did for me back then, and I wish him well in his retirement.
Chief, would you like to say a few words?
Chief Steve Anderson, actually I wanted to express something from Andre. He was really trying to be here tonight. He had some conflicts come up. This does mean a lot for him. He was my first training officer, and he was one of my -- trained me as a detective. I was one of those supervisors. Antreasian. You got it. You did it. But he's also been very important in our career survival for the future of our officers, that mental health and everything. He's planned the initial department picnic that we had. So Andre is very appreciative of everything that the city has given him. He gave everything he could back when he could, and he wanted to come here and express that tonight, but wasn't able to. So he wanted to say thank you.
House Greg, Rich? Ken?
Chris?
I'm good, thank you.
Just a few words, very quickly. I'd get to run into Andre here and there at police ceremonies, here and there. I don't get to know all the police officers very well, or all the firemen very well, but he was one of the most pleasant human beings to be around. It was evident, he served as a role model for that department for a lot of years. His stature, his professionalism definitely was injected into a lot of people in that department. He affected a lot of careers. 31 years, the city is far better off for his efforts here, and we're gonna miss him. They are having a gathering for him on Thursday, correct? At the police station? Yes, unfortunately, I cannot attend. If I can change my schedule around, I will. But again, if you're able, please stop in. Oak Creek's really losing a great asset in him, but we wish him a long and happy retirement. So on behalf of the entire council and myself, please pass this on to Andre. His work is appreciated, and we wish him a long and happy retirement.
With that, motion, please.
Yeah, I'll move to approve resolution 12095-101519, a resolution of appreciation to Andre S. Antreasian, a retiring police detective.
Kuzikowski, I'll second. Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Next, we have a mayoral proclamation for a resident who's about to celebrate her 100th birthday here in the City of Oak Creek. Catherine, would you read that into record, please?
Certainly. Congratulations to Marian Janik on her 100th birthday. Whereas Marian Janik was born October 30th, 1919 in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, and grew up in Sparta, Wisconsin. And whereas Marian met her husband Edward while out dancing one night. And whereas while Edward and Marian did not have children of their own, Marian was well-loved by all the children in the neighborhood and loved them as their own. And whereas Marian loves music and has a great talent for finding a song to fit every situation throughout the day, and is often heard singing a tune while walking down the hallway. And whereas Marian's secret to living 100 years young is to try to not let things get to you and just keep singing. And whereas Marian will be 100 years young on Wednesday, October 30th, 2019. The celebration on her special day will be held at her residence, Creekside Manor in Oak Creek. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor of the City of Oak Creek hereby congratulates Marian Janik on her milestone 100th birthday. Be it further resolved that the City Clerk be, and she is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy of this proclamation to Marian Janik dated this 15th day of October, 2019.
Thank you, Catherine. Again, we will be out to visit Marian on...
Wednesday.
Wednesday, the 23rd?
The 23rd.
The 23rd, so. The City Clerk and myself will go out, will present her this, and we'll share some birthday cake with her, and I will get to meet a person who is turning 100 years old, which I think is a very special feat. I hope we all get to enjoy that moment ourselves, but again, it'll be great to meet somebody that has accomplished that, so. We wish her well, and we will see her on the 23rd. Moving on to new business, community development. We have a resolution and consideration of that resolution for the United States Postal Service to honor its previous agreements regarding the development and operation of a postal processing center and mail distribution facility at 2201 East College. Andrew?
Sure. Carrie and I can kind of tag-team this, but, you know, this has been well-discussed and communicated to the council where we've been at in same-page reports that I provide. The moral of the story is the U.S. Postal Service on July 30th issued a notice of intent to proceed with a construction project, I think this fall, it states in the letter, to which they also requested that if the City of Oak Creek wanted to review and comment on the plans, that we would need to provide notice within seven days of that letter. The next day, or the day, a couple days after, on August 1st, I never remember, there's 31 or 30 days in July, so on August 1st, we responded that yes, indeed, we do want an opportunity to review and comment on the plans. I think it's really key, the language they're using, the federal act that they're citing, and, you know, they are not, as they did in the original entitlement for this project in the 2008-ish timeframe. This is not a full-blown entitlements process, which they went through with the city, as I understand it, at that period of time. That is the only communication. Those are the only plans, which, they're not plans, they're notice of intent to provide some plans, that the City of Oak Creek has had. That's the only correspondence USPS and the City of Oak Creek have had. They have apparently, per the media, have awarded their bid to a firm out of Cincinnati or Indianapolis, I can't recall, for a $36 million project in the City of Oak Creek. That's where we sit today. We wanted to provide an opportunity for the council to weigh in, because certainly we're hosting jurisdiction of said project, and we have, as you know, during some of the history on the first go-around here, we had some very interested public to want to understand and know and weigh in and provide input on what was coming. From what we can tell, the only details we have is that it's about half the size of what was originally entitled in, again, 2008, 2009. And some of that backstory is in the resolution as well. But that's it. So we, at the small leadership team, weighed a couple options. We weighed one option in bringing forward a resolution that said, "Thanks, but no thanks, we're moving on, we don't want your project." And we also, I guess we erred at the side of collaboration and put forward the resolution that's in your packet tonight, really providing the backstory and just imploring them to go through a transparent process, engaging the city and engaging our public. So that's where we're at. We wanted you to get an opportunity to weigh in, and so the public knew where the city was or wasn't kind of in this process. We are being sidelined, it seems like, and that's unfortunate. So we wanted to give you an opportunity to weigh in, so you can go on the record if you so choose, so the public knows you're aware that we've communicated with the U.S. Post Office in terms of our desires and intentions for a collaborative, public and transparent process. And, you know, with that, hopefully we stop learning about the project in the media along with everybody else. That'd be really appreciated. So with that, I don't know, Carrie, if you had any more flavor or wanted to provide any more background on that?
If there are any questions about where we were in the original approval process, I can certainly provide more details. Like Andrew said, this did originally go through in 2008 and was approved for a general development plan. In 2011, they actually came back and amended the ordinance and had a secondary or an alternate general development plan that showed something should the Post Office determine that they were not going to go forward with locating there. That was also approved and has since expired, so everything on the property, including the zoning, has expired since 2015. Per the ordinance, that means that the zoning districts have reverted back to their pre-M1PUD designation, so it is now a split-zone property, B4 and A1.
Maybe Attorney Carlos can speak to this. We certainly understand, I like doing that to you, Melissa, we certainly understand that there are some privileges of a federal entity and local zoning and regulatory scheme. We certainly acknowledge that. However, what, as you see in the resolution, we did have a very robust, transparent, collaborative process the first time around. Our public was engaged in that process, I understand and was told. We're just asking for that again, just a proper vetting, whether we get building permit fee revenue, or, you know, have the authority to go in and inspect as in a typical development, you know, whatever. But for the planning piece of this, it's really critical. You know, maybe Mike, maybe the city engineer can talk to, you know, some of the traffic impact analyses that were done. Really, there's some work that still needs to be done from a public infrastructure standpoint. Our friends in South Milwaukee are also keenly attuned to, we've been collaborating, and I did not check with their administrator, Tammy Maisig, before this evening, but they were or will be considering kind of a resolution of their own, as that's kind of right on our shared border there.
Thanks, Andrew. Yeah, I could speak to the traffic, you know, very briefly. I was encouraged because I did take a call from a traffic engineering firm that was reviewing the site and the traffic needs for the entrances. And actually, at this point, we talked an entrance to College Avenue, previous plan, which was the larger plan, you know, back 12 years ago, had an entrance out to Pennsylvania Avenue as well. So my knowledge, it's just a College Avenue entrance at this point. But again, it was encouraging that that's being looked at. I've not heard one thing since, kind of echoing everybody else's experience with this latest go-around, so.
It's what we know.
And just to give you some background, I was here, Mike, you were here 12 years ago also, I think we're the only two left here in that process. It was a very somewhat collaborative effort with the United States Post Office at the time. Definitely the routes changed a little bit. I have talked to Mayor of South Milwaukee. You're right, they are gonna draft a resolution. They're very concerned about the impact analysis of the traffic going forward, too. We kind of pride ourselves on partnerships here. We're extending it out. We'd like the Post Office to come forward and just work through the process with us, take into account the neighborhoods and the impact that's going on there. We have a fine history of working out projects like this, so again, it's just a resolution asking for that cooperation.
Alderman Dukenyak, 3rd District, just a question for Mike and Mayor Dan from back, you know, in 2008. I can recall there was significant resident opposition to this development. I mean, what were their major concerns?
Well, basically, it had been a farm field forever, still is a farm field. And they were concerned about the truck traffic, light pollution, things of that nature. The Post Office worked on it. I mean, you know, the loading bays went to the west side towards train tracks. They took into consideration, they had some neighborhood meetings. Bermage, it's gonna be big, is that even a word, bermage?
Oh, it is.
Berms. Berms are going in to help protect the neighborhoods a little bit. So, you know, they did take into consideration, it's just kind of came out of left field here, a little bit unexpectedly.
I believe that was a 900,000-some square foot...
It was huge.
...deal, so, I mean, this is, from what we, you know, it's about half the size of that, that's positive, but again, the day is gonna change for these people.
Sure.
And we want, we want an opportunity to hear from them.
You know, really, and the traffic was a big one. Mike mentioned there was an entrance on Pennsylvania and exit. That was of concern, and how that road was gonna tie into that subdivision, which currently only hosts one way in, one way out, so. There was a lot of collaboration going on early on in the process, so hopefully we continue and we get that back. Go ahead, Carrie.
I can also include that within the ordinance itself, the conditions and restrictions did address a lot of those kinds of concerns. They did have some very specific construction requirements that would be applicable to things that we no longer have the ability to enforce. But there were things in here regarding parking, regarding setbacks, buffer zones, berms, extensive landscaping. There were even lighting requirements that limited the heights of poles in the parking lots, various other things, including fencing and maintenance and operation signs. I mean, there were quite a few considerations that were included in that ordinance that went to addressing a lot of the concerns that the neighbors had.
And we may not have that opportunity, and that's why we're bringing this forward tonight.
Yeah, well, you're right, everything that's been said has been pretty accurate from my memory. The size of the development, the traffic were the two main issues. The fact that it's not a tax-paying entity also was part of it. The thing I would like to be reminded of is, do we have any jurisdiction? I see the roundabout was constructed. What about, were there any other specific requirements on the roadways surrounding that? That I don't recall. And would we still have something to say about that, given that it's not on the actual property?
So there was another main entrance that was off Pennsylvania Avenue, and that was another roundabout, and that was because of shift change, they expected, you know, a steady flow. And I recall that worked with, there were some multifamily buildings on the South Milwaukee side, that all worked with their entrances. And I do recall then as Pennsylvania was getting closer and closer to its construction project, which I think then took place in 2012, you know, we got really desperate letters to the Post Office saying, "What's happening? You know, are we putting this roundabout in, or are we not putting it in?" And they just kind of shut off communication at that point, at least as far as our questions on the access. So we built the road straight through without that called as that.
Do we have any jurisdiction going forward on the roadways?
You know, I don't really have the answer. This is kind of part of the whole mystery that we're working within on this project as a whole, and...
That should be our biggest...
Just the one communication by the firm that was looking at the traffic, so.
That looks to me to be like the biggest concern now, because movement of that traffic that's already a busy intersection, and Pennsylvania is already an issue.
Right, so I think we've seen very few documents on this latest plan, and there was not an entrance out to Pennsylvania. It was just going out to College Avenue at this point, at that roundabout entrance. So that doesn't mean that that's, that that doesn't need to be reevaluated. Of course, the intersection of Pennsylvania and College will have to be evaluated, but there is no entrance out to Pennsylvania, as far as we know, from what we've seen.
Mike Alderman Dukenyak, 3rd District, I mean, when the results of that traffic impact analysis come forward, that would be the federal government or the Postal Service's responsibility to make the changes to the roadways, correct? Who's responsible for that?
We certainly believe that is the fair thing and the right thing.
Right.
We don't know what their ability is for them to tell us, just, "No, we're not doing it," you know?
I mean, and could you see a case where suddenly the city was stuck with some type of expense to accommodate what that impact report mandates them to do? And how do we deal with that?
That would be, that would be a bad situation.
Okay.
You know, we probably have to try and get legal with them, Melissa.
We just don't know.
Stepping back a bit, from what we've been discussing as staff, and certainly trying to keep the council informed, from Andrew's perspective, and the mayor's certainly, I would say that in that intent letter that we received, which is the only communication, there's reference to the Postal Accountability and Enhancement Act. So as Alderman Toman's asking similar questions, what's our ability to weigh in? I think that the intent of this resolution is exactly that, to say, from where we were years ago, over 10 years ago, we're asking that the same spirit of cooperation, involvement and input from the city to try to make this project, if it's going to come to fruition, and it certainly seems as though it is moving forward, we'd like to have the ability to weigh in on all those pieces. So from an academic perspective, from their citing the federal law, any such building is to be constructed only after consideration of all requirements, other than our local procedural requirements, of zoning laws, land use laws, and applicable environmental laws of the state or of a local subdivision of the state, which would apply to the building, even if it were not a building constructed by the United States government. So to that extent, I don't think it's a reach to say that we would like to have the opportunity to make recommendations to the Postal Service with respect to building code requirements, zoning laws, land use, and environmental laws. And in addition to that, any measures which should or would be taken into account regarding local considerations such as traffic, impacts to the community, the public, the neighborhoods, things of that nature. Perhaps obvious, but really self-evident that we want to have taken that opportunity to say so. After the 31 days in July, we sent out our letter affirmatively saying, "We want to have every ability to weigh in," whether it's inspections, and that would mean the city provides a schedule before construction is begun, and as far as any other input, including asking that the community input with respect to the land use be established by the process that appears to be laid out in that federal law. So we're in a very different position than where we were years ago, but it was a project that came, as you've heard already tonight, after so much effort and collaboration, and we're really trying to make that happen. So that was the tone that we wanted to take in terms of advising the council that whatever cooperation and input we can provide, we want to be able to do that. So hopefully that's of some help.
It's really as simple as that, so.
Steve? Alderman Kirkowski, 1st District. This certainly, well, obviously was, first came up before I became Alderman for 1st District, but I remember all the, a lot of the discussions that were made back then. And since it's become public, I've had some residents contact me about the development, and they were new residents, they weren't living in the subdivision when this first go-around occurred, so they had a lot of questions as to, you know, what's it gonna look like? And I told them, "Don't know, they haven't shared that with us." And one resident said, "Well, they will share it with us, right?" I go, "They may not. They're postal service, federal property, federal government, they, apparently they don't, they think they don't have to." And he says, "Well then," this is his quote, "So they're gonna cram it down our throats whether we like it or not." How do I answer that? I says, "Well, we're gonna have a resolution Tuesday night, try and change your minds." But that's how a couple of people are feeling out there. And it wasn't some of the construction on College Avenue, wasn't some of that at least thought of with this mail processing facility, with the roundabout and, I mean, that? And Pennsylvania north of College is State Highway 794, so obviously if we have a traffic issue, the state... So obviously, if we have a traffic issue, the state could potentially be involved because if trucks are coming from downtown, it might be easier to take Lake Parkway versus the, the I system. So it's going to get a little dicey and they just want to, lack of a better word, play this game and just move forward without any involvement from the county or the state or even the city of Oak Creek. I almost told one of the residents that, well, you know, you may have to reach out to your elected, your federal elected representatives if you feel that, that, that serious about it, because we may not have any standing. So it is what it is, I guess, right now.
And I know it is. So I guess the first step in it is we do the resolution. There's no further discussion. Motion on seven, six, please.
Kurkowski makes a motion to adopt resolution number 12099-101519, requesting that the United States Postal Service honor its previous agreements regarding the development and operation of a postal service processing and mail distribution facility at 2201 East College Avenue.
Lorick will second.
Roll call.
Alderman-Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Item seven concerns engineering and its consideration of a resolution to establish a stormwater management service charge for the city of Oak Creek.
Mike, do you want me to lead off here on this? Just jump in, Mayor, if it's okay with you.
Sure.
We talked a little bit about this at our budget workshop, right? And this, as you know, this was coming back to establish that. And before we hash and maybe rehash some of that discussion at the budget, I just wanted to provide you with, did I time out here, Tim? At any rate, I wanted to, I wanted to provide you with some comparable data regarding the stormwater user fees in Milwaukee County, as well as the state. Every community, every city or village in Milwaukee County has a stormwater ERU fee, with the exception of Franklin, River Hills and Shorewood. So we have a pretty good sample size, all of the other cities and villages. The, the county average is right around $78. The statewide average for 122 utilities, the fee average is like $63.42. The city of Oak Creek is, with the exception of Hales Corners, which is very low at $14 per ERU, the city of Oak Creek and West Milwaukee are basically neck and neck for the second and third lowest at $36 in South, excuse me, West Milwaukee and $37 at present in the city of Oak Creek. So I just wanted to provide you that little bit of that background and maybe some comfort if we do move forward with this slight fee increase for this year. That Oak Creek at present, $37 is far less than, than the average of all of Milwaukee County. And to that point, far less than the statewide average of about 122 utilities. The APWA, Wisconsin Jepter, I think that's American Public Works Association, right? They provided this data and Josh and I kind of cobbled, cobbled some of this together here prior to the meeting. So you had that, that data and so the public could hear those, those data as well.
So of course, this fee is instituted initially in 2003 as the mandated stormwater requirements were put on the, the local governments. And it served us well. We've done a lot of work with the funding that this provides over the years. And every year at budget time, we, we take a look at what the CIP needs are. And, and that's maybe projects that we're doing, also equipment that needs major maintenance or replacement. And so we do an analysis and we did that again this year. And it looks like a $2 fee would, would help us get to where we need to be to, to take care of the things that we need to take care of. So our plan is to review this every year at budget time. But at any rate, this year, the recommendation would be if we could increase it $2, take it from 37 per ERU to 39.
Thank you, Mike. Any comments? Ken?
Mike, off from your memory, maybe you can just, for the public, just give us some notion of what actually this kind of money is.
Yeah, this is, it's, it's the ongoing street sweeping operations. It's the catch basin cleaning. It's the maintenance on the city jurisdictional and regional retention bonds. And it's, it's reditching of our rural roadways. It's smaller scale storm sewer projects. A lot of this is done actually with our DPW forces. And over the course of the last four or five years, both street sweepers had been replaced. Last year, I know a backhoe was purchased. And this year, the, there's a request for a road salt brining system. That looks like a really, really good purchase, something that's going to pay for itself in a matter of years, just a couple of years because of the reduced salt usage. Also, great, great stormwater positives with the less salt making its way into our waterways.
Steve?
I'm going to try and remove my emotional system from this, from this topic because I'm, I, after the budget workshop on Friday, I, I just was thinking about a lot of this stuff. And, and I'm somewhat not convinced that this brine system is needed, but I won't. But what happens is, a couple of years ago, we went $2 more. Then we went $2 more. And last year, I said, I'm getting tired of just raising it every, you know, $2, $2 every year. You know, at some point, you know, you're nickel and diming the residents to death with these little fees here and there. It isn't just stormwater fees, it's inspection fees, licensing fees, all, you know, all these other fees. We, we tout the fact that our tax levy is going down, but the appraisals go up. So I get, I get inundated with residents who are complaining that their taxes are going up. And it isn't just city taxes. I mean, you've got many taxing jurisdictions, but overall, they complain their taxes are going up. So we want to go $2 more. And Andrew, don't take this the wrong way, but I often hear comments about, well, we're, we're below average, we're below average. You know, a certain department wants to raise their, the salary on their employees because, you know, some study was shown that we're, we're below, we're at, you know, below average. We're, we're at number nine of the top 10, you know, so we've got to raise the rate to attract better people. So one could say, well, jeez, if we're at $37 and the average is, what'd you say, $60 some dollars? You know, let's just forego this every year discussion. Let's just go 50 bucks. Let's just make it 50 bucks. And we don't have to, we'd still be below average. Not at 37, we'd be at 50 instead of, you know, we'd be below, below $64, whatever it was. But here we are talking about a $2 increase on a stormwater fee, which the residents see as an increase in their stormwater fee. Be it only $2, they see the word increase. They see the plus marks on their tax bill when their taxes go up. They see increase. And later in this meeting, we're going to be talking about something that may affect the taxpayers yet again. So I don't want to use the, the term stop the madness, but every single year, we're just going to keep going $2, $2, $2. So if somebody wants to go on record as saying, we're going to do this every year and raise your stormwater fee every single year, whether you like it or not, then, then somebody say that because.
Steve?
But what I'm saying is that there were a couple of, there were, there, there's a couple of items with this whole street cleaning, stormwater stuff and stuff like that, where I wanted to get the cost of leaf pickup during a certain time of the year that may or may not affect our storm sewers and so on and so forth. I've been waiting for those costs for two years. And probably since I'm the only one who's concerned about it, I should just give up. But residents would, would like an answer. A couple of them would anyway. So I, I just don't, I don't support a $2 increase.
Okay. Just let me clarify a couple of things for the public. First of all, this review of the $2 increase, and Steve is correct, we, we raised it $2 last year. This is a year by year budget consideration. Doesn't, there's nowhere here saying, we're going to do this year after year after year after year. This is actually very responsible budgeting for what our needs are to create that sinking fund when we need vehicle, equipment replacement, infrastructure improvement, things of that nature. To really just insinuate, throw it up to 50 bucks, that's really irresponsible in my view. So with that being said, it's the consideration for this budget year on the $2. As far as the leaf pickup goes, I don't know if the study ever came through, but I can tell you, South Milwaukee does it. And they're just a few, what are they, about four square miles? Am I correct in that? The mayor told me that they approach half a million dollars to outside contract pickup leaves. So we're about 28 square miles, somewhere in there. I'm kind of ballparking it. I can only imagine what it would cost us to have private service come in and pick up. And we do not have the capabilities tax wise to provide that service right now to citizens. Mike, any comment there? Are my numbers kind of way off?
Yeah, no, I just, just, you know, size of South Milwaukee is, you know, they're, they basically out of our 36 square mile old township, they take up like five miles of our northeast corner. That's it. But they are very dense. So they've got a lot of, a lot of roadways, tight grid, a lot of homes.
And then, you know, just one more comment. As technology changes, salting techniques, this, this brine system, things improve, things modernize. And of course, in old infrastructure, things begin to fail and they need to be replaced. We have to be proactive at doing this instead of reactive, turning around and going, oh, by the way, we haven't done anything for 12 years. And all of a sudden, yeah, we do want to club you over the head with a $20 increase. I think that would upset people much more than something manageable like this on a year to year consideration basis. That's my comments on it, having sat through budget and dealt with this year after year. Anybody else?
I just had a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
How long, I don't know, Bridgette or Mike, Carrie, I don't know. How long was it at $35? It seemed like it had held for a number of years. And then it was because of the prudent budgeting, we held off to, to increase it because we saw the need for it.
In 2017, we had a $4 increase. 2018 was a $2. 2019 was a $2. And 2020 is proposed to be a $2. We were looking at a five year span at that point. The analysis that went into your draft budget for the workshop last week had no further increases after 2020.
Because that's when we established that sinking fund.
Correct.
Because we knew equipment was coming up.
Correct. That was part of the objective four years ago, where we started looking at this and said, okay, one sweeper is going down, two sweeper is going down, the backhoe. So we knew that things were coming and that really got everybody's gears turning as we were talking about, well, instead of doing 50 cents this year, because we were at 50 cents, the mayor was one of them that was saying, let's go $2 so that then we are establishing a sinking fund. And you can see the sinking fund growing as you're looking at that analysis that's in your draft budget. So that, that gives us the ability to not have to utilize tax levy for these equipment purchases or have to bond for these equipment purchases. We have the ability, because those equipment have direct positive impact to the stormwater system, to utilize a portion of those funds to pay for that equipment.
All right. Thank you for that answer, Bridgette. You did say though, 2017. So prior to that, was, did we hold it at $35?
$29, $29 before 2017.
So it was $29 for
It was at 29 for a few years.
It was a 29 for a very long time.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion?
Danny, just
Yeah, go ahead, Ken.
From Mike, you know, Mike and I, southern part of the city were essentially a water collection system. And money has been very prudently, I think, well spent in the city in terms of keeping residents out of harm's way when it comes to historical flooding issues. We've had, you know, bridge replacements, creek bed restoration, like the street sweepers were big ticket items. I think it's prudent planning. I think it's effective planning to do it this way and specifically targeting small, small fees like this for very specific spending decisions. I think it's a very wise decision. So.
Seeing no further discussion. Motion on seven, please.
Gale, move to approve resolution 12096-101519 to establish stormwater management service charges for the city of Oak Creek.
Kurkowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman-Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
No.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Item made is consideration of a resolution granting the Wisconsin Department of Transportation a permanent easement at 9555 South 13th Street for a traffic signal controller. Mike, are you ready?
Excuse me, I was trying to get a graphic up on the screen and I'm not, not having success.
That's all right. I kind of move pretty quick up here sometimes.
No, no problem. It's a, a fairly basic item. The DOT is working with us and with the developer, the Ryan Business Park. And there are, of course, extensive road improvements that are required in the development of that property. And that includes traffic signals that are proposed for the intersection of 13th Street and the, what is the QuickTrip South driveway. And so there is a property immediately south of that South driveway. And it hosts the, it is a city owned parcel. It has the Oak Creek running through it. And the need is for an easement. We Energy, or excuse me, not We Energies, WISDOT, Department of Transportation, they will own and operate those traffic signals. They need to place a traffic signal control box near that intersection. They have identified the northeast portion of that city owned parcel to have that controller put there. And, you know, staff recommends that this easement be granted. That's the, the best location for this controller. It's, it's out of QuickTrip's way. It's out of what may develop on the east side of that intersection. And so it's, it's kind of a, you know, be occupying basically a vacant parcel. And again, the city owns and the city does access periodically to do maintenance on the, on that portion of the stream. But, you know, fairly infrequently.
Questions for Mike? Seeing none. Motion, please.
Kurkowski makes a motion that the common council accepts resolution number 12097-101519, resolution granting the Wisconsin Department of Transportation a permanent easement upon 9555 South 13th Street towards traffic signal controller.
Go second.
Roll call.
Alderman-Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukneak.
Aye.
Toman. Gale.
Aye.
Item nine is consideration of a resolution approving the Eastbrook Preserve Edition 1 Topsoil Agreement for Stockpiling Maintenance and Spreading of Topsoil. Mike, that's yours also.
So there is a large stockpile of excess topsoil on the Eastbrook subdivision site. It is wholly contained within two lots. I believe it's lots 60 and 61. The developer had asked if there, if they could have that soil remain there for the next 18 months or so, such that as lots are, as homes are constructed and graded, that they would be able to spread that topsoil on those lots for their customers. And we thought that there's probably some benefit to that. It doesn't, doesn't need to be hauled off, run across the city roads, only to be purchased by these new homeowners and brought back in as, as sifted topsoil from, from some top, topsoil landscaping company. And we thought that if they can do this, maintain it on, on those two lots, road control in place, keep the pile looking decent and vegetated on the areas that it's not being worked on, that, that we would recommend that to the council that, that that happen. um, that that happen. And to that end, we thought we needed to memorialize these conditions in an agreement, and that's the agreement that you have before you.
Thank you, Mike. Questions from Mike regarding Eastbrook Preserve and the topsoil.
Uh, Alderman Dukenyak, third district, uh, this is in my district, and, uh, I, I do ride by the, uh, development site, not weekly, but on occasion, just to see how things are progressing. Uh, talking to some of the neighbors in the area, no, I've been presented with no really comments or concerns about that, Mike, and it, it doesn't look bad right now. It's not terribly unsightly. It's not going to be a burden to, to those that are moving into the new development or surrounding neighbors. So again, just a comment that there's been no real concerns about the topsoil in that area.
Anyone else?
Um, I did visit the, the site. I actually stopped in. The site's progressing well. There's quite a few homes in there, lots already sold. I think it's a very prudent move. This pot, this topsoil will not be there long. People will have full yards probably within a year or so, so.
Hey, Mayor, sorry, I might maybe even clarify. Currently, I, from what I recall, when I drove through the other day, there currently had a stockpile topsoil kind of around the bend of that, uh, road. So they intend on moving?
Um, so what, if, yeah, what you see out there now is, as you enter off of, the road is escaping me right now off of Nicholson, but the, then that north, the north entrance to the...
Arbor Creek?
This was another graphic that I wanted to bring up, but, but, uh...
So i- is there a resident that borders it or is it an empty lot?
So this is, yeah, Arbor Creek Drive, which is the nor, the northernmost entrance off of Nicholson into, and it would be two lots in, uh, from Nicholson, the, the lots 16 and 61 where that topsoil is. Um, there is another, uh, there is another pile of dirt that they need to get rid of. There, there's no question about that. We're telling them, you have to get rid of that, um, before you'd have consideration for, for final plat. They have, they have other work to do out there yet. They still have sidewalks, they have to put in, street lighting, um, and then a couple other punch-less items. In fact, we're meeting them on-site at, at 8:00 AM tomorrow to, to go over these final items, but, uh, this is just one of those, those items. And we thought since it was topsoil and, and they, they will provide it to their, uh, to their clients, you know, I think there's some benefit to that.
Is the lot that is kind of tucked into there, private lot off of Nicholson Road, is that a, is that a home occupied by a homeowner or is that a vacant lot? This, this little corner here, Mike?
Oh, okay. All right, yeah, you're looking at the same graphic that I have. That, that very first lot, uh, I believe that is a vacant lot as well at this point.
No, it's not part of the subdivision. It's part of the, you know, Homes Law in Nicholson.
Yeah, Red and Nicholson, it butts up to the south side of the, of the lots.
Oh, okay. Okay, gotcha. Yeah.
Yeah, just, just south of 1659. Is that a vacant lot or is that a homeowner there?
Um, I don't know if that's vacant, to, to be honest with you, but it, but it is not part of the, uh, but it's not part of this development.
So what is the dimension of what you intend to see stockpiled there, Mike? Go for that?
Uh, well, it would, it would run across the, you know, the northern portion of lots 60 and 61 as you, as you see it now. 61, uh, jets off to the south a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
It's not in that portion of the parcel.
Yeah, any feel for like how large, what the scope of this stockpiling is going to be?
Um, I mean, I, I guess I don't. I don't have the yardage that, that, you know, the cubic yards are in, that are in the pile.
Ideally, you'd tell them to stick it back in a corner somewhere. Usually you don't want that perfect land, it's off of Nicholson or off the entrance to your subdivision.
Uh, you know, if that needs to be a condition of this, we, we could, we could talk to them about that and then have to come back. We'd have to change the conditions of the, of the agreement because basically they, they want to keep, they want to keep the pile where it is right now and it, and, you know, and shape it up. Um, and so we could do that if that, if that's the desire.
It's just, whatever. Is, is it there already?
Yes.
Oh, sounds like that.
Yeah, yeah, it's there. They're not bringing it there.
Sounds like car storage in the city. Right?
Ken, no, no concerns from the residents in the area?
Uh, just because they haven't squawked doesn't mean someone's not concerned, so. But anyway.
We have the condition that it, that it's, it's, the length of this agreement is 18 months from when they get final plat. So let's say they're, they get final plat, you know, two meetings from now, it, you know, that would start the clock on that 18 months. I, I, I would expect then that pile, you know, dissipates significantly over the, over next summer.
No further discussion, motion on nine.
Dukenyak, move to approve resolution number 12098-101519, approving the Eastbrook Preserve Edition Number One Topsoil Agreement for the Stockpiling Maintenance and Spread of Topsoil.
Lorick, go second. Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Oh.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Uh, item 10 is our license committee. I'd like to turn that over to Alderman Kirkowski at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I trust everybody has had an opportunity to look at the common council report and look at the minutes from the license committee meeting on October 3rd. Does anybody have any questions or concerns with that report? Okay, seeing, seeing none, Kirkowski make a motion to grant the various license requests as listed on the October 15th, 2019 License Committee Report.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman and Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
And item 11 is consideration of a motion to approve the October 9th, 2019 Vendor Summary Report. You all have it, and any questions can be directed to the front table to either Bridget, Mike, Ted, whoever it is, Josh.
If I could point out items number four and nine. Number four is our initial grant for Lake Shore Vets in TID 7 for the development agreement. And number nine is the payment for Franzway from the tax refunds that the council approved, I believe, two council meetings ago.
Any questions concerning the summary report? None, motion, please.
Gail, move to approve the October 9th, 2019 Vendor Summary Report in Nemo to $520,825.10.
Guzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
And that brings us to a presentation for item 12 on street lighting and a special charge analysis, so.
Let's see this up, Mayor, if I, if I may?
Yes, go, please.
Okay, great. So just to keep things straight here, this is a continuation of our strategic action plan implementation. And last summer, uh, we had a presentation to the council regarding us, what we called a white paper on CIP Funding Alternatives Analysis. As a part of that, we established some goals for bridge maintenance as well as additional road, uh, preventive maintenance, uh, of $350,000 and $75,000 for bridges. Uh, as an opportunity and as an alternative for funding that, one of the funding alternatives was establishing a special charge for street lighting, operational fees, costs, uh, and then use, utilizing the levy capacity that would be vacated by moving those costs to a special charge to, uh, to further some of those goals we have for our CIP. One option of many options that were, was in the, in the gamut of alternatives for funding. Now, a couple meetings ago, we also finalized a presentation and an analysis, uh, in large thanks to Ted and, and Mike, regarding a potential LED, streetlight LED conversion citywide. Again, one of the funding alternatives to implement a project is, was, uh, creating a special light, uh, lighting charge on the property tax bill and vacating some levy to accommodate that cost or, or really utilizing the special charge to accommodate the, the LED conversion. So this presentation this evening speaks to generally the operational costs that are currently levy funded that could be shifted to a special charge. It doesn't speak to how this special charge could fund an LED conversion. We are, we are building fundamental foundational blocks of options and education for all of us, so we can provide you with an understanding when we go back and look at implementing these projects and determining a funding source, so you have that education and that, again, that foundation of knowledge. Uh, I, I am not, we are not suggesting tonight that you opine one way or the other about how you feel about a special charge or, or is the amount too much or too little. What we're doing is educating you. We're going to put the arrow back in the quiver, and then once we begin implementing some of the funding goals in those, those two strategic action plan documents, you'll have a knowledge base for if we, if we happen to pull this tool out. We have a lot of tools that we're considering, uh, you know, debt exemptions, uh, strategic borrowing, and I think most impactful is shifting some of the debt service, the levy debt service costs, once TID 7 starts generating the increment that we know is on the way with all the projects in TID 7. There is going to be preferred alternatives and, and alternatives that maybe, given the changing times and the changing financial outlook over the next couple of years, that rise up or down the list, I guess I should say. So again, tonight is just an education on this as one funding alternative. However we want to use it and implement it in the future or not is, is still to be determined. So with that, if I could introduce the council to Chris Swartz. Chris is with a firm called Public Administration Associates, and we engaged Chris and his, and his colleagues at PAA to produce a, uh, an analysis to, to really educate ourselves on, uh, on this, on this option. So with that, Chris, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Andrew. Excuse me. Mayor, council?
You can feel free to sit, Chris, if, if that, if you want to do that. We're pretty informal here.
Formal? Okay, I'll do that. Uh, thank you so much for allowing me.
Just make sure you're on the mic.
Okay, I got it. Thank you, Mayor. Um, like Andrew said, um, we are hired, um, to do this street lighting special charge analysis. PAA is a firm that's been around since 1993. Uh, Dr. Steve Hints from the University of, um, Oshkosh, MPA program started the firm, and he's still a, uh, an active consultant. Um, Kevin Brunner took over as president. Kevin's been in the business 35 years. Uh, Dave Brettle, um, is a partner in the firm as well, uh, and he worked on this as well. Dave is a, uh, the administrator, uh, for a few more months for the County of Walworth, and he used to be the city attorney for Wauwatosha for many years. Um, and myself, uh, Chris Swartz is my name. I've been in the business for 36 years as a city manager, the last 13 in Shorewood, Wisconsin, who you mentioned this evening.
Ever implemented a stormwater fee there?
He knows.
The whole time you were there?
Yeah, I know, I know. I, I felt guilty when you said that. Um, uh, so I retired recently, a few years ago, and joined, uh, the firm. Uh, and it's funny, I was, uh, did a study in, uh, Oak Creek in 1983 for, I was with the, then Citizens Governmental Research Bureau. Uh, now it's called the Pub Wisconsin Policy Forum, and so, uh, I worked for Norman Gill back then, if you remember his that name. So I did a, uh, study on Oak Creek, so I'm glad to be back here. I'll be brief, um, on this and, um, open up for questions, uh, per your policies. Just got to figure this out first. There we go. Uh, I'm not going to over redo what Kevin, uh, what Andrew just said about, uh, the history. By the way, there is an amazing strategic plan here, and I've seen a lot of them. It is one of the best I've ever seen. Um, and, um, this is a result, this active proactive aspect of it's very important. Um, so, Public Administration Associates were contracted to research state and local ordinances, describe current annual street, city, street, city street lighting cost, describe how other communities account for their special charge, collect and analyze other communities' data utilizing street lighting special charges, and describe how they implemented this. Excuse me. Develop alternatives for equitable cost allocation, and establish an Oak Creek street lighting charge policy for legislative review, which I'm going to, uh, discuss tonight. So legal authority, excuse me, 660627 of the statute authorizes a municipality to impose a special charge against real property for current services, uh, like your stormwater fee. That's where you get the authority. Thank you so much, Bridget. That was very, because I'm, I'm dry. Um, so there's, there is legal authority. I discuss in the, um, the body, um, some of the, um, angst around that, um, 660627, which I'm sure you've read, um, we thought it was important to discuss a tax versus a fee. As you know, and as the, the, uh, body of the, uh, paper says, uh, we can't just implement a tax. It's not in our home rule. We can implement a fee. And the definition between a fee and a tax sometimes gets a little cloudy. Um, the stormwater fee that you talked about earlier, it has been pretty much proven and it's kind of in the middle. You know, a tax, think about a tax as for fire services, general service to the community, where the other spectrum of fee is really the garbage pickup fee. You know, you, person goes, picks up your garbage, is a very direct, you know, it's easy to see. Um, we, we think the street light, um, the street lighting fee is somewhere in the middle of that. Um, but we've been confident that, um, so far, uh, there hasn't been any challenges to, to that. That's something I'm sure, uh, your city attorney, if you decide in the future to go further, there's been a, many, um, um, communities, or a few communities, I should say, not many, who have done some legal analysis on that, but, uh, that's really up to your attorney to look at that. Our attorney, uh, partner, Dave Brettle, made sure I was going to say that this evening. So, as you can imagine what attorneys usually do. Um, and one of the things is that, um, an ordinance is required, which I put an example in the back. Uh, exemptions from, uh, special charges should be limited, so you can't, well, we're not going to include residents, residential properties, uh, you know, for an example. You really have to include everyone unless there's a good reason. Like in this one, uh, undeveloped land, farmland, forestry, those, the forest lands, they should be exempt. Um, but most others should not. There will be a discussion if this ever goes further about county parks and city parks and, and that's a, because that's huge, you know, and, um, uh, M A T C and those types of things. That's something for another, another day, but, um, and one thing that's important, we thought state law requiring a reduction of property taxes equal to the amount of the new fee does not apply here. When you do your levy worksheet, if you implement today, for example, you want to implement a new stormwater fee for a million dollars, you would have to reduce your levy by a million dollars. That's just the way the levy limit worksheet. Can, uh, tell you that. This particular, uh, fee was not written into that law, probably because they didn't think anyone had. There's only two communities, uh, at the time the levy limits were, um, adopted that had this fee. So, um, so that's kind of the legal authority issues that, uh, Kevin's RFP asked us to look at. Uh, what we did, asked us to look at, you know, what is the current charges? This slide shows the 714, 964, um, is the current. Uh, doesn't include any administrative fees, um, like I'm sure your stormwater, um, user In Wisconsin, the two communities that I identified segregate their fund in a special revenue fund, not a utility fund. Special revenue fund, according to the GAZB, you just have to have a stream of revenue to that. So a capital improvement fund is really not a special revenue fund because there's no stream of funds into that. But it can be looked at in other ways like a capital improvement fund. It's not a utility fund where you actually fund depreciation and it, so I don't think at this time it meets the standards of a utility fund, though it could in the future. That's really up to, you know, the community and if you ever decide to consider this formally. So what we did is we studied many communities with such a fee. Wisconsin, Minnesota, and some other states. I detailed 10 communities in this study. I didn't want it to be overwhelming to do them all for the reader. But we wanted to identify general allocation variables. So there was some, most communities had some weighted allocation, which means they charged an extra weight on industrial properties, commercial properties, or multifamily properties, and less weighted on residential properties. That was a common theme we saw. There was limited example of allocation by light type. So if you had a 20-foot light pole versus a 10-foot light pole or this amount of, what's the term, wattage? Is that the right term we can use? We didn't see much of that. Some California we saw, but we didn't really pay a lot of attention to that California one because it was so complicated. Again, I mentioned undeveloped properties usually are exempt. Municipal and county parkland frequently exempt, frequently was exempt, especially in Minnesota. We think, though we could not find a sighting, that the law that allows street lighting charges does not allow for parks. They're exempt from the state law. In Minnesota, yes. Not here in Minnesota. Minnesota has their own specific law, like ours, we mentioned under 6606 was kind of a general fee statute. Minnesota has a specific one for street lighting. So that's kind of a, that's why there's so many communities in Minnesota who has this. It's very common. Entire street lighting expense is included in the special charge. One of the things that Andrew asked is, hey, can we, is it 75%? Is it 50% of the charge? Is it 714,000 that is in the charge? Usually it's the entire amount. Some communities, hey, you know, our major, the cost for our major thoroughfares, for the street lighting cost for the major thoroughfares, we're going to exclude that in the total because everyone benefits from that. But that's very rare. It's usually all of them. It's so hard to just dissect that, I believe. That's why they do that. Per unit basis is common for single-family properties. So a residential property is a unit and so a lot of people are charged by units. Per acre for non-residential is common. And I'll get into this a little bit more in a bit. Per parcel is very limited. Remember, the parcel is the one big parcel where a unit is an individual unit within that parcel. So if you have 20 units in an industrial parcel, those units are usually assessed a fee, usually. It's not just the parcel that's given the fee.
Put another way, if you have multi-tenants in a commercial building or multi-tenants in a multifamily building, that each of those tenants are a unit.
Some communities do per water utility meter. That's mainly in Minnesota. And the reason why we believe is that this kind of the water utility, it kind of runs like a water utility and the people who do the billing developed this fee. That's kind of what we think did, why the utility did that. It's easier to bill. We think that's why. Residential equivalent unit is a very common way and I'll get into that in a second. And there's snowboard policies. That means if you go to Florida for three months, you get, what, 25% of your, did I do the math right, Andrew? Okay, good. You get 25% reduction in your fee. We're not recommending that at all because that would be a nightmare. But some communities do that. In Georgia, I found a few that do that. Okay, so some of the policy alternatives. To narrow this down, Andrew asked us to do at least, just give us four big picture allocations. So the per parcel, as I discussed, it allocates a street lighting charge equally among parcels. Simple. Not the units, as Andrew talked about, just the parcel. So if you have 10,000 parcels and you have a, you know, you divide the 714,000 by 10,000 and that's your charge, right? That's simple. Per unit is a little more complicated, but it's the same type of thing. Usually if you have 10,000 parcels, you may have 12,000 units because of those multi-tenants, right? So you would divide this 714 into 12,000 units.
You can tell like on the per parcel basis and why we're not recommending that. Emerald Row is one parcel. You know, 375 people living there benefiting from the city's streetlights versus the 2.3 people that live in your single-family household, the parcels would be charged the same. So you see the unit is a little more equitably distributed given the intensity of the parcel. If you want to look at it that way, the intensity of the use of the parcel.
Andrew, that brings up a question that I had discussing with a few of my colleagues here. How do we address that per unit or per parcel for development areas and communities that don't have streetlights? A lot of our subdivisions don't.
But it isn't just for the streetlights. It's citywide. So if they're driving down any city street, they're utilizing a streetlight.
Oh. So the house, the parcel, the house benefits from it because they live here and they can travel. It is a little more of a stretch, you know.
Right, so in assessing formulas, that's never taken into consideration?
I didn't see that. Now, let me, there was a few communities who this side of town had, did not have streetlights and so they excluded that entire area. That was rare, but I seen that in my review. Yes, I didn't. So it was a possibility. So one of the things, a standard unit calculation. The idea behind this is that if a single residential parcel is a unit, let's figure out how big on the average is that residential parcel. In our case, it was roughly 21,000 square feet is a parcel. So that is a residential unit. So if you have one acre roughly, that's really two units, right? Two residential equivalents. Very similar what you do in your stormwater management. You have the, you know, the impervious area per lot and then if it's a big lot, I think you do it by acreage here or is that?
I don't differentiate if it's residential, but if it's.
Well, it has a similar thing to your current one. And it's been legally sound that you're, you know, because you're allocating based on a half acre and everyone's based on that half acre. So that's kind of, so if you have 10 acres, you know, you just, that's 20 REUs, right? That works. Per unit and lineal foot, that allocates per unit parcel for single parcels and streetlight on a lineal foot frontage basis. Rice Lake does this. Rice Lake does, single families are one unit and the commercial and industrial are based on a lineal foot. It's a little more complicated that way, but we've seen that in other examples as well. So on the recommended policy, if you look on your ordinance or in the recommendations, you know, there's a street lighting system definition. We provided one and not that difficult. It's all your streetlights and the energy and the maintenance behind there and the even your traffic stop and go lights are in that too. So we define that. We define property types from residential, industrial, multifamily. What's the other one? Multi-use residential on the bottom and residential on top.
Mixed use.
Mixed use, thank you. That's one that, so we defined all the property types, that's important. The expenses to be funded, which we provided you, we added 1% as an administrative fee, tended to be common. The billing method recommended since your stormwater utility, stormwater utility is on your tax bill, it probably makes sense that this is on your tax bill. Most communities put it on their utility bill with the garbage fee. I don't know if you have a garbage fee here? No. In many communities, they have the tax rolling on the, it's on your, it's on your utility bill. So 92 bucks for whatever the number is. So that's how a lot of communities do it, but you already have a system in place. So we just thought we'd recommend that. Exemptions, I limited exemptions just to what most people, most communities do. The forest, the undeveloped and, thank you, public rights ways, things of that sort. And on the allocation methodology, the last page 12 here of the slideshow, we think you should do an REU based on the average single-family lot size of 21,000. Single-family duplexes, triplexes will have one REU multiplied by the base rate. Non-residential parcels with a base rate multiplied by the assigned REU. So if you have 10 REUs and your fee's $47, or whatever, $40, it's a $400 fee. That's kind of simple. Maximum REU is 50. It's all over the place what the maximum is. You don't want to charge someone just because they have 500 acres. You know, that could be a crazy number. So most communities limit that, just the way it makes sense. Multifamily parcels, it's a minimum REU, so $40 in this case, times the number of units. That's what you would do. Same thing with the mixed use parcels. And again, the public rights ways, swampland, forest, and agriculture uses are exempt in our example. What I did here is I just said, okay, under your current tax, here's how your street lighting apportionment is. Residential pays 58%, commercial manufacturing, multifamily 41%, agriculture 0.3%, tax exempt, obviously zero. Under this formula that we discussed, residential would go down to 45.5%. Commercial would go up from 41 to 51, 52 roughly. Ag from 0.3 to 0. And tax exempt under a very limited definition of tax exempt. I don't know if you want to mention that, Andrew, but we really kept it minimal. We just said, this is probably the lowest, we didn't include MATC, we didn't include parks, we didn't include a lot of that. So that would go up from 2.7%. So usually what you see in these things is residential costs go down, commercial go up, and obviously exempt go up because they weren't charged.
So you can see, I mean, just for clarity here, this, because this is pretty fundamental, we're weighting the costs differently. We're weighting how we, which property types pay for those costs differently. Under the current levy, 58% of that $714,000 are paid for by residential property owners. In the new method, that goes down and commercial, manufacturing, and multifamily pick up a little bit bigger piece of the pie there. That's what this is illustrative of. And it's, it's pretty common, right, that you're going to see that shift away from your traditional residential, single-family homeowners to more intensive uses of property.
Unless you use per unit, then that may, or per parcel, I guess, then it might be pretty close. So the estimated charge, and this is, you know, with very limited exempt properties, about $40.77. And that can change plus or minus 10 depending what the legislative body will do in the future or not. So that is the end of my presentation. I don't know if there's any additional questions or Andrew, do you, is that it?
I'd just add, if you could go back to, in the way this could toggle back and forth, if you'd go back to the breakdown of the 714,000, like slide three or four probably, or six. So this is just one, this is just one option that we spoke of. Here's what we levy if we're street lighting administration and maintenance and energy, $715,000. If we wanted to create a special charge on the tax bill to pay for these costs, we would have levy capacity to do other things in the city that we need in the city for the future of the city, capital improvement being one. That's one way we can do this. We can take the same method, now I'm switching gears to the LED conversion. We may find that we want to do a two, we want to do the $2 million à la carte project that is the LED conversion, just making numbers up. We're going to go borrow for 10 years, we're going to borrow $2 million for 10 years and our annual debt service is 350,000. Well, that could, that number could potentially be what we're trying to recover, not the 715,000. You have a finite set of years until that debt service is paid back for that project and then the special charge falls off. I don't want to go down the rabbit hole of talking about that tonight because I know we're, we got a little long, but that's the way you can use that very same methodology that Chris just spoke of to potentially as one funding alternative for the LED conversion project. Does that make sense? You just have to have that rational basis to pass the legal litmus test of, geez, we thought about how we wanted to do this and this is how we equitably came up with as a way to do it.
Questions? Steve?
Anyway, I have, this isn't really so much for Chris, maybe for Mike. And it's, it is related, but not tonight's topic, but is related to LED street lighting. In the last discussion we had, you said there was a portion of the South Branch Industrial Park that has the LED lightings and you guys are looking at that and seeing how that all... Just for what it's worth, is that, is the new development, the Eastbrook Preserve, did anybody talk to them about putting in LED lights or is it going in? This would be, if not.
Yes.
Yes.
All, yes, all new street lighting that's been going in for the past seven years or so, all LED.
Okay, good. So that's going to provide a good test model?
Where is that?
Yeah.
Everything out here is.
Yeah, we got stuff out, yeah, I noticed that too. I just, okay, thank you. Didn't know that.
Again, you know, Andrew mentioned the strategic plan. Chris brought it up and Chris is from the outside with loads of experience and that's quite a compliment you paid us and thank you for that, that we follow the strategic plan and this is really part of it. This is a very powerful document when you start to read into it and I think Andrew said it best, this is the building block going forward to really strategize how we're going to implement this in the end because it'll happen sooner than later, later than sooner, whichever way you want to put it. But it's something that's going to happen within the city as technology changes and as costs get more competitive and we look for ways to cut. So believe it or not, it's, once you get into it, it's pretty interesting reading and it's pretty light. So really take your time with this document.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to commend, you know, Chris, your firm for, you know, obviously an extensive survey of what's going out there in the real world in terms of this and Andrew and the staff and work on this strategic plan. and the staff and work on this strategic plan and this particular action item we called out in terms of actually looking at things like this because we, we all know that the, the capital committed to this particular aspect of our city services is kind, is kind of hidden and kind of just assumed, carried forward. So regardless of what my personal philosophy is in terms of new fees, I appreciate the exercise we've gone through. You know, Dan and I have kind of seen this kind of evolve over the past few months and it's in various iterations, we've had a little, a little more time to kind of noodle on it. But it definitely does, you know, put a, a base of, of knowledge in place where we can potentially move if, if, you know, things budget-wise or priority-wise change. There's some other things I'd prefer to actually, you know, look at how to, how to fund these things a little more within what the present scope of how we, how we do business, but I appreciate the effort that's gone into it so far and it gives us obviously another arrow in our quiver to tackle these potential projects as we move forward.
Just, just to add on to that, if I may, I think that's exactly why we brought this forward. So if it does come back as a, as a viable option, you guys can have the policy discussion on the philosophy of, of that versus trying to, you know, educate yourselves on, well, how is the fee arrived at? Is that the fair way to do it? Hopefully this can get us past the point where you, seven, you six, and then seven, if needed, Mayor, can really debate on, on that point that Ken made of, you know, do, is there a better way or, or do we want to, do we really want from a policy perspective to add a new fee to the community? That's, that's what we were hoping to have that understanding when you do, if you do have that discussion in the future.
Mayor?
Alderman, Duquesneac, third district. And Chris, maybe you can provide an opinion. Why haven't more municipalities in our state been taking this step?
I knew someone was going to ask that question.
You got two. And how long have they been using that, you know, the special assessments?
Rice Lake did it in the early 2000s.
Okay.
Prairie du Sac, thank you. I always get that with Prairie du Sheen, did it just 2017. My view is just like the stormwater utility, no one did that until someone said, hey, I'm going to do this. And then, oh, that's a good idea. So it caught on, the stormwater utility. And these things happen like that. Refuge collection, for example, didn't go on the tax bill. These things go slowly. They don't catch on right away. And frankly, it's a little bit, you know, the street lighting is, you know, I don't think about that usually as you do with refuge or whatever. But again, stormwater utility, it took a long time for that to catch on. Other states did it, other communities, other states did it long before Wisconsin. So I think that's the key.
If, if I may, and I definitely want to, to make this point during this discussion, you know, Chris talked about certain fees, certain services wherein when you establish fees, you have to reduce your levy. And I think it was a 2012 or 2013 act on the heels of Act 10, they said that if you do stormwater utility, introduce a new garbage fee, uh, public fire protection services, meaning hydrant rental, not firefighting, and plowing. Why you'd have a special fee for plowing, I don't know. If you do any of those four, those are, those are covered or covered services, I believe, or was it? Yeah. You have to reduce your, go ahead and do a fee, but you got to reduce your levy by the same amount. No incentive to do that. If, if this policy option gains in popularity, we could have it legislated out the same way those other services had in, in 2012, 2013 where you lose the tool because you have to reduce your levy anyway. So there's really no benefit, no motivation. So we wanted you to have this option out there because at any time, this could be legislated away in terms of a local, you know, decision.
Currently, this special charge, this type of, would not force us to decrease.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Appreciate the talk.
Chris, you got something?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that this is, this is a great tool. You know, it gives us methodology that we can use as a tool in our quiver, like you said, and it gets you thinking like, just not A, B, and C anymore. It gets you to think, how do you make this work holistically? So I think whether we all agree or not agree, I think it's, I appreciate the opportunity to research this. So thank you guys.
Okay. Before we adjourn, just, just a couple announcements very quickly. Our farmer's market wraps up after 20 weeks this weekend, so it's your last chance to get your homegrown vegetables, pumpkins, and all your needs that the farmer's market's been providing this whole summer. Directly after the farmer's market is our annual Fall Fest. So Fall Fest is taking part right here in Town Square. There's pumpkin decorating, scarecrow making, all that stuff, corn mazes and a lot of things to do, good fun family event. And the 27th is going to see our first ever Badger Tailgate Party in the square. So 26th, thank you. And then Halloween is that weekend. So the Ghosts and Goblins will be coming to your door there starting at 4 o'clock on Sunday, the 27th. I'm going to, I'm going to be there the wrong day, let me tell you. But anyways, and again, thank you to our staff, very well prepared as always, our IT guy for setting up all your phones and your iPads and stuff. You guys do a terrific job. Me and Ken, we're in a couple meetings today with potential developers, things like that. Our staff performed just greatly. Andrew, great job. Passing on to Kerry too. It was a great meeting. So staff is working very hard and when we come in and get compliments from gentlemen like this, it really says a lot about what's going on in this building and it's really a tribute to the people that work here 40 hours a week. So you got good people working for you here in the city.
Mayor, as much as I wanted you to end on that.
Yeah.
I have even better news. Catherine, you probably can't reach me to kick me, but I understand that having our budget hearing at our regular meeting in November is an option for us. So just, we talked about this at the workshop. So if I, I need to get the dates right, but we're going to forego that Monday night special meeting for just the budget and we'll handle it on Tuesday of that regular, regular kind of council meeting.
Something very new.
That's all kosher, right? Okay.
That's old. Oh, according to Melissa, we used to do it, I guess we all just wanted to meet an extra time here.
Good on you here. I'll, I'll clarify that in an email just so everybody's on the same page.
Excellent, excellent. Again, enjoy the season if you can, get out and enjoy the square. It's going to be a very nice weekend going forward. So motion for adjournment, please.
Kowski, make a motion to adjourn. Oracle second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Tooman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.